All right, I'll call this Board of Selectmen's meeting slash budget drops to order. Uh, roll call, we have myself, Phil Crossman, Pam Alley, Donald Poole, and Jake Thompson is absent. Andy Doherty, Town Manager, and the Budget Committee. Go ahead, Andy.
Great. Uh, so tonight, um, or this afternoon, we've got, um, we're gonna try and go over law enforcement, fire department, ambulance, public safety, harbor code, and animal control. Mark and Kerry, I know, are at the moment. Um, just go over a couple of quick things, similar to the last meeting, um, in terms of how we had that, try and go one hour, take a quick break, go back again for another hour, another quick break. Um, if you're not speaking, if you could just mute your phone, or your, um, your computers. Yeah. Just a quick overview, most of you, I think, were on last time, but, um, just a quick overview again of the, the Select Board Strategic Plan. Um, identified the mission to work with the town stakeholders, regional partners, and engage citizenry to provide services in a fiscally responsible manner. Services which build resiliency, increase opportunities, and foster respect for our community. And so the values and the focus areas were identified through that process a couple of years ago. And this is our first budget, um, trying to integrate this into the budget process. Um, so because of that, the, the goals worksheet look a little bit different this year, again. Um, you know, having the first two columns with the short-term budget item and the objectives. And then we tried to link it to, um, values and focus areas of the board. Try to put a timeline start on there so we can see, kind of set that benchmark for when we want to try and get that going. If there's a cost associated with it, we try to identify that. The, uh, potential KPI or key performance indicator is what we want to try and measure to be able to show you, the board, or the Budget Committee, or the community, you know, how we're doing, or how we did towards that o- um, object or, or objective we set out to do. Um, if we know how many hours it might take to ta- to start that program or project, we want to try and track that better. Um, so with that, again, first year, we're trying to integrate that in, so some, some of them are a little more obvious than others. Um, but just working towards, for showing you that. Overall, the quick summary of the proposed budget. Um, see the increases and decreases from, from this current year FY21. Um, the numbers in that column are what I propose, uh, which might be just a little bit different from the, um, what the departments have. Um, you know, we'll go through each, each department page and, and see what both columns look like. Um, the total proposed overall expenditure increases $219,000. Um, some of the big ones include the planning, the debt service, uh, law enforcement, admin. Some of them are just kind of one year, or, or purchases that we have to do, uh, that would be a year or two. Um, you know, so some of that would, a good amount of that's likely that we propose to come from fund balance, which again, we'll see through the process. Um, so the first thing on for tonight, because they're on, I think I have Mark going first with fire. Um, and then Paul with safety, and then Kerry with ambulance. So Mark, are you able to go over your goals?
Sure can. Who's ringing?
I forgot to shut it off.
Sure. So, um, uh, you got it pulled up there, that's, oh, okay.
You able to see that?
Uh, I can see it on my other screen, so I'm good. Um, first thing on the list is to purchase, uh, 15, well, it's a new set of chimney cleaning rods and, and a couple new brushes that we let out to, um, anyone who wants in the community, they sign them out. It's been a really, um, effective program, I think, that we've done for years so that people can clean their, um, you know, chimneys by themselves. We don't do that for them for liability reasons, but we do provide the equipment for them. The years that we've had them, they've had a lot of use, and a lot of them are showing a lot of wear, and it's just a matter of time before some are gonna break. And this, anyone knows, they don't want to break in someone's chimney because it's a pain to get them out, but. So that's the first thing. They are fairly expensive. Uh, for a while, I was replacing the rods as they kind of wore out. Um, I've not been able to find the same kind of rods as they're threaded together anymore, so you have to buy a complete set, um, which is more of a snap lock type button connection. Um, unfortunately, I've done quite a bit of searching for the threaded ones and haven't been able to, to find them, so. Um, the second one is to train four new interior firefighters. Um, again, I, this is, I hope to do this. I don't have, we, um, the people lined up to, to, that want to do it now. It's our hopes that we can recruit some, some new people and get at least, you know, three or four new guys that are, or gals that are trained to, to perform interior fight, firefighting. Um, we're down, our interior guys are down. Um, I think there's only four of us on the island right now, um, because of various other reasons. Some are out on injuries and other reasons, but that can, can efficiently, and that are allowed to go inside a building to fight a fire, so that's with the two-in, two-out rule, we really have to have everyone there on scene if we're gonna do any active interior firefighting. So it's kind of crucial that we, um, you know, recruit some new members and, and train up some existing ones, hopefully, to get that certification. And the only really way, good way to do it is to bring that training to the island. Um, and that number I've got on there is a stab in the, shot in the dark. There's so many variables that can affect that, um, that it's just kind of a, it's a rough guesstimate of what that would cost. It may be more, maybe less, depending on the instructor and how much they're willing to do, where they will stay, uh, all that stuff, so. Any questions on any of those two? I know I kind of jumped over those first two. Good. All right. Uh, next one is increased participation of personnel at trainings and calls. Um, it's, again, you just heard me speak to the, um, declining number of people that we have. Uh, we do hold quite a few people on the roster right now that are, what I would call not very active. Um, that, um, you know, despite prodding and pleading, doesn't do much good to get them to show up, so. Um, developing a way to try to entice those people and, and re- retain them and get them to come to trainings um, is, is a challenge always, and gonna keep working on that. Um, and try to attract all that participation, and hopefully, um, again, increase the number of active people. Uh, just recently had two new people submit their application in the process of onboarding them now, so hopefully they'll work out. But we are kind of in, I don't want to say dire straits, but it is definitely, um, a concern of mine that the number of personnel that we have is steadily declining, and the number of people showing up is also declining, and, you know, that could have something to do with the COVID, but um, wait and see, I guess, on how that goes, but we will be actively working on, on trying to keep increasing those numbers. Questions? Okay.
Mark, I did have a question. Um, are you looking for more volunteers? Is that what you need, or are you looking to add, like, full-time to the roster?
No, not full-time, just more volunteer, more volunteer, well, excuse me, volunteers.
Okay. Yep, thank you.
Um, just give everyone else a chance if they want to chime in. Me, uh, the next goal would be to meet all of Bureau Labor Standards requirements. Um, that's the OSHA requirements that each department in the town is mandated to, to meet. Um, granted, I'm sure all the departments can say this, we don't all meet every one of those checkboxes. Um, it's hopefully this year, we can, at least at the fire department level, um, check all those, which is a pretty good task, and that's one of the, um, KPIs, and Andy's probably talked to you about, um, that we're tracking of, uh, that's already in place, that, um, start tracking all of those requirements, making sure we're getting them, getting them done on time. You know, this is in the broader scheme of things. I think we've talked before of, Andy might have mentioned the safer, uh, certification for the town, which, um, gets you, I think, a two-year buy from any type of enforcement inspection by Bureau Labor Standards. And more importantly, a, um, somewhat of, and I don't know what the number is, but a reduction in your, uh, workers' comp, uh, premium, so. Um, I think if you look at the Workman's Comp line, I, I know, speaking with Andy, that hours in the town's gone up, so I think town-wide, if we all can work on this in the next year or two, um, department by department, we should be able to, you know, not only make our employees safer, but, you know, cut the cost for the, for the taxpayers as well by reducing that cost. Questions?
Are those all your hours, Mark, or is that volunteer hours as well?
Oh, what do I get for hours down there?
Two hundred.
Two hundred. It'd probably be, um, the total, I took a wild stab at what, how many hours that would take of doing the training, um, the paperwork, the policy review, the, um, hose testing, ladder testing, SCBA monthly, all those things are requirements that right now take up a lot of my time, yeah.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yep. Uh, add a chassis, add chassis inspection and maintenance to the service for done by Greenwood. Uh, EV emergency vehicles, they're the ones who come out and do our pump service and testing every year. Um, last year, they actually did it, and I didn't know they did it at the time, but noticed that they were fixing a few things that they usually didn't, but, um, and when we get the bill, I did definitely notice they'd done it, so. Um, but I think it's a great idea. Um, I think we should be doing it. They pick up a lot of stuff that I wouldn't pick up, and um, we don't have a mechanic onboard on fleet. We do preventive maintenance checks, but that doesn't cover what these guys, um, check over on the apparatus, so. Um, there is, I think, an $1,800 increase, which is reflected in the service fees line item this year for that. Uh, next one is subscribe to Wardens Report, um, which is a great tool. Hopefully, people will use it. I know I spend a significant amount of time, especially this time of year, just scratching down burn permits. Um, there is a, uh, online system out there that's free that, um, people can use to obtain burning permits, um, which would not only save me some time of writing each one of them out, but also improve accessibility for the public to um, not have to stop down here, or whatever, they can do it right from their computer at home, and all the safeguards can be set up from, by myself, of what days they can burn, when they can't burn, link the permit. Um, and then we receive notification when a permit is issued, so. Um, I think it would be a great tool, and look forward to putting that into place, and there shouldn't be, uh, no anticipate any cost associated with that. Uh, next one is, um, convert one more of our, um, it's just a model number, 2.2 is the model number. Uh, self-contained breathing apparatus, SCBA's, those are the air packs we wear. Um, that's been enough, we've been doing this three years now, working on a conversion of our older models of self-contained breathing apparatus to the, to a newer, newer model. Um, as, as you know, every, everything does have an age limit to it, and, um, a few years back, we determined it was time to start. Um, you know, upgrading those older units. Um, we've per- uh, through the Association, Firefighter Association, we've purchased four new ones. Uh, we do have, uh, money building up to purchase the fifth one, and we, our plan was to convert, um, for the newer one, uh, excuse me, five of the newer ones that we had. Um, a conversion is, uh, like $1,500 compared to, um, like five, uh, $6,000 for a new one, so. And they, the conversions would have the, most of the same safety, um, features that are, that come with the new ones now, so. Uh, the last one is, um, purchase 500 feet of two-and-a-half hose, um, at least three years ago, I believe. We began replacing some of our pre-hose that was manufactured prior to 1987, um, which isn't compliant with N, with NFPA standards, National Fire Protection Agency. Um, so we've been picking away a little bit at a crack, um, every year. Um, again, this is just another, a year to try to get another chunk of that, um, uh, replaced. Questions? Andy, got anything?
No, sir.
Okay. Long-term.
I have a question on these. Are any of these in the existing budget that we're seeing? I, I can't find the, the number.
The two-and-a-half inch hose, yeah.
Any of, any of these things that you've been talking about?
Yeah, yeah, the hoses, the conversion is, the two new cylinders are, um, the chimney cleaning rods, I hope, uh, I hope I included that. Um, yeah, so all that should be, I did not, I upped the training budget a little bit. I don't think I went the full 4,000. That might have been total allocation. I can, I don't have my budget sheet, I have to pull that out, but. It does reflect, it does reflect an increase, but I don't know if it's the whole, I don't think I put the whole 4,000 on top of what we have.
You do have the four in there. It's, it's up from three to four.
Right, a total of four, so I mean, obviously, the interior firefighter certification would be like a whole nother chunk of change. I mean, I, that would be included in some of that, Donald, so if, if we did put on like a firefighter one, firefighter two program, which is the certification, the name of that, um, we may have to look for some additional funding, but, um, we'll, we'll see what happens here.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Um, long-term, uh, purchase 13 mobiles and 16 portable DMR, those stands for digital made radio, excuse me, digital made ready radios. Um, digital's coming to the county in approximately four years, is, is the best number I've got. Um, we've purchased just a couple last year with a, with a, um, pooled purchase grant, um, which they're pretty pricey, as you can see. Um, unfortunately, I thought we had a, uh, Rockland Fire was proposing. They were doing a regional grant for radio replacements for, um, all the departments in Knott's County. They were working on it when this vaccination program, um, came out. Um, Chief White Talk from Rockland was heading the grant writing process. Uh, we gathered up information for him, got everything rolling, but came almost deadline time, and he said he just didn't have the time to finish up that grant and be able to do it. Um, so unfortunately, that kind of fell through, which I was really hoping for, um, which would have included all those radios, as well as EMS's radios, but we'll hopefully can find some kind of grant like that in the near future, in the next few years. Um, but if not, um, it's just a, uh, expenditure that we need to look out for, that we may have to take some out of, um, reserve or, um, budget accordingly in the next few years. Um, like, next one is complete the conversions. We talked about, I talked about the conversion from, of the self-contained breathing apparatus from the old, um, old ones to the new ones. Uh, it's, this is just gonna, um, I just put it on there that it's an ongoing project that we hope to finish up in the next, well, it'd be at least two budget years. Two fiscal years down the road, if we do a replacement, one replacement every year, so. Um, again, just trying to stagger that out to keep the budget more of a level playing field, so, level ground. Um, improved response time and improved location identification. Um, again, we, we continue to, um, respond to places, both fire and EMS, that do not have their 911 address, um, posted on the building. Um, so that's one of my, one of my goals, is to hopefully lead a campaign here to, um, I don't know what we do, either provide free numbers, go nail them on the house, or twist their arm, somehow get them to post their 911 address. The, the next one, purchase 500 feet of two-and-a-half hose. Um, so I believe, if I thought this through right and did my numbers right, that next year would be the, I think we would complete that two-and-a-half hose replacement. Um, unfortunately, we'll have to move on to our inch and a half after that, but, um, that's, it's less of that, but. Um, again, it's just a, something to try to, um, gradually phase out this non-compliant stuff instead of taking a huge chunk at it, at a crack with it. Uh, here's the next big, this is the, the big one. Uh, purchase a fire engine to replace our engine four. This has been on the goal sheet for the last four or five years. Um, nothing new, you guys, um, but next year, um, we hope to, um, to be able to do that. Um, to replace our current engine four, which is 36 years old this year, um, with either a newly used apparatus. Um, the one issue, we're, from what work I've done so far on it, that we are bound by a length restriction in the station with that one. It, um, where that is housed is in front of our boiler room, so um, the biggest, excuse me, the longest that truck can be is approximately 25 to 26 feet at the most. Um, so, a lot of the used apparatus that I can find is, you know, 28, 30, 35 feet. There's nothing really in that shorter wheelbase, um, shorter truck length, if you will. But definitely we keep our eyes open and see if, if, um, we can, something, if it works out, again, finding well, used is always a gamble, and, and finding the right truck at the right time for the right price is, is, um, I don't want to say a crap shoot, but it's a, it's a challenge to be able to find that right piece. Uh, we were lucky enough to do that last time, and again, not, not opposed to doing that, it's just, I think, gonna be more of a challenge with that length restriction.
Um, Andy, is there, is there money in, I thought, I thought money had been being put aside for this, for this engine. Is there money already set aside for this? Some, some, obviously not 325,000, but.
Yeah, there's some. I mean, every, the last few years, I think we've been putting about 25,000, um, to the reserve. Um, right now, there's about 200,000 in the reserve.
Thank you.
Mark, how, how old are the rest of the engines that we have?
So we have a, um, that one's a 85, the next one's a 1990, which is engine two, which is the mini pumper. Uh, and then the next oldest one is actually the most recent one we get, we received, which is engine one, which is a 2,000. And then our newest engine is, um, a 2003.
So we're, we have pretty much our whole fleet's at least 20 years old, is that right, roughly?
That's correct.
Yeah. Okay.
So the, the other prob, and it's not a problem, and I, and I don't know how much, I'm sure you save some money in the end, and if, if you think of it, that you know, you buy used, the problem is with used, you've, like, the last one, I would, I would not consider buying, I would not recommend buying a truck that would, that's over 10 years old to start with. If you push it out to like a 32 or even a 40-year replacement schedule, you've already taken 10 years off that truck when you bought it, so you're just gonna be replacing apparatus sooner. Granted, it's less money, probably more repairs, so in the long run, I don't know, I don't know how you'd figure what, what the difference is. Again, I'm sure there is some cost savings, but again, we're kind of back in the same boat where I was. Where we've been is that, you know, what, how many years ago, 30 years ago, they bought three trucks in a 10-year period, um, and trucks back then were like $80,000. Um, trucks now are $325,000, and those are, you know, base trucks, so. Um, you could spend, I think Lincolnville just spent, was it $475,000 for the truck they just received? Um, but I, that 325 is, is pretty much on target for, for a base, um, like a stock model truck. Um, that E1 is a brand of a truck that they, they're, that's out there. It's kind of like a, you know, if, I, I don't want to say a cookie cutter, but it's not a, uh, you know, special, you know, order this, order that, order that. It's kind of, you, you get this, you can change a few things, but I wouldn't think we would be able to get one for much less than that brand-new. Again, welcome to looking around for used and all that stuff, but just definitely want to make sure that's on people's radar as you look at the bigger picture, and.
Mark, another question.
Yes, sir.
Do we need to have four engines for, for trucks, or can we, will we cut one out and replace the other two, or do we have to stick with the four?
So, good question. Um, so you, typically, you're not using all four at one, one time, maybe, um, you know, a couple times a year, you'd, you'd be actually using all the four trucks, pumping all the four trucks. Um, and it, and you can't, engine two, which is the mini pumper, I don't even want to kind of put that in the same category, because that's more of a brush truck, has a different type of a function than what a commercial, what a, um, like a Class A structural pumper does, um, more of, you know, lot smaller pump that doesn't get used for, you know, structural use. It isn't even rated, it isn't tested for that. Um, so that, so we kind of talk about three trucks when I talk about, do we need three trucks versus two, two trucks versus three, if you will, Donald, if you follow me. So, the, my best answer to that, and my best opinion, and, and, um, is that yes, we do. Um, for the, for the purpose of, um, water capacity that we arrive with on scene. Um, is, we all know our, our water, um, supply is not the greatest on the island. We just did a flow test this year of the hydrants, and it's kind of scary of what the gallons per minute come, that we could get out of those, which would, um, definitely affects how you fight a fire, just because there's a hydrant in front of your house doesn't mean it has enough water in it to put out a fire. So, for, for, um, water capacity, I would say yes. For water hauling purposes, if we have a woods fire, or a fire that's out of town where we actually have to truck the water, if we only had one truck, obviously, that's, you know, one to 2,000 gallons less that would be arriving, or that could be transported to the scene. Um, and with, you know, if, definitely if we were on the mainland, and, you know, the next town's 10 minutes away, hey, yeah, absolutely. Um, got no question about it, but, um, with, with our location, um, we're not gonna have that other truck coming in 15, 20 minutes, half hour, hour, or maybe two hours might be the, might be realistic, so.
Thanks, I just figured I would ask the question, but.
Yeah, I can go on, you know, I can definitely, um, talk about it more, more later if, if we want, I don't know if that's something you guys would like to talk about at the latest Select Board's meeting, but, um, can definitely provide that information.
Thank you.
All right, so Mark, this is Bill.
Um, yep.
Uh, is there anything wrong with that 36-year-old Chevy?
Uh, right now, we have a, we have a, a little wiring problem going to one of the rear lights, um, and the, uh, okay, excuse my, uh, valve cover gasket is leaking pretty bad right now, so trying to nurse that along. Um, so it does need some work. But it's, it's still pump, it still passes pump test, and it's still, you know, it's still dry, it still gets inspection. Um, I don't know if we'll get the next one, but, um.
Well, there's, is there any rust or anything like that showing up on it?
No, it shouldn't be any rust.
And, and, and the chassis gets checked now with this new Greenwood checking, right?
Yep.
So from a safety standpoint, um, if it's sort of a backup vehicle, it sounds like perfect, and it fits in the garage.
Well, we can talk about that. I don't know how much, how long you want that sucker to go, Bill. She's 36 years, it's gonna be 37 next year, um, you know, I, some of the safety features in it now. Um, and it doesn't, it only has lap belts, I don't know. I, I recommend replacing it from fire chief's posi- position, so.
Yeah, that's a lot of money.
Understood. I pay taxes too. I don't want to pay anyone. I gotta, just trying to do what I'm hired to do.
Yep. All right, thanks.
Yeah. Any other questions? Uh, next couple of, uh, The next couple of purchase hydrogen cyanide meter that was been on one it's around eight hundred bucks. Still haven't got our overhaul policy. It's just, it's another meter that we can use during overhaul. The recent science has shown that a lot of the firefighter injuries or exposures are from cyanide gas, not necessarily carbon dioxide, which used to be the the thinking. So at some point, it would be great to have a tool that meters that so that we can take off our air packs with those, you know, especially with you know, the four people that currently are certified to to wear them. That means the four of us are doing most of the work because we have to do the work within like one. So if we have a tool that can say that that the the air is safe to breathe, then then we can take those things. Hopefully down the road in a year or two, we'll be able to purchase one of those. The other thing is to complete a, it's been on my, it's another one's been on my list for a while is to complete, complete, excuse me, complete that complete set of SO SOG stands for standard operating guidelines for the fire department, which is just basically every every duty, everything you do should be heavy standard operating guideline that goes with it. So that firefighters know what their expectations are ahead of time, know what tool to take when they jump off the truck, blah, blah, you know, all those things that are spelled right out, everything from payroll, administration rate to to firefighting duties can be laid out in those SOGs. It just takes a time to write them down and get them organized. So hopefully get those done. There shouldn't be any cost than time to do that. Questions?
So that the the summary overview of all the expenditures on this page. There are, there's no real offsetting revenue on this one. You know, sometimes we're able to utilize fund balance in the past. We've had some, you know, purchase equipment purchases or something that we might have utilized the equipment reserve for, but generally this is taken out of taxation. Any other questions for Mark on the fire stuff?
No, but Andy, where's the new fire truck? Is that going to be in a vehicle section of town vehicles or where's that in this budget?
It's not till next year or the year after, correct?
Right. It was it was originally proposed for next year. Again, I I understand, you know, everyone has wants. And if we have to get in line, that's that's I do understand that. So but it was originally slated for the next year.
Well, where are we putting any money aside in this budget toward it this year?
Should be under, I'll let Andy talk, but I think it's would be under the reserve fund allocation. I don't know what that's called, the way you put that, Andy, but I'll shut up.
Oh, yeah, we usually either put it towards a fun fun battle or not fun balance, the reserve funds twenty five thousand a year is what we've been putting in the fire reserve. Otherwise, it would normally, if you got a loan, it would normally come out of your capital project line, your your pages or your debt service rather.
So with with the current balance of two hundred thousand, we put another two twenty five in, we have to come up another hundred the following years. Like, do I have that right?
If you're going to pay cash for it, yeah.
If you're going to buy it at all or if you're going to buy a new one?
Any other fire questions? All right. Mark, you want a break or you want to go right to public safety building?
Oh, let I let I come. All right. First line item is the purchase twelve unication pagers. We've been doing this the last couple of years. We've doing it longer than that, just again, replacing some of our older pagers, pagers. With three years ago, we switched to a unication brand, which is a cheaper model. Saving about a hundred dollars a piece on one. I think they're four hundred dollars a piece that I can't see that on here. But the twelve would, I believe, I should finish the upgrade. And this is for both fire and EMS departments. It's kind of what's in this in this budget, not why it's we share. We just determined it was easier to have one pool of these pages and I tracked them and that deal them out to both fire and EMS. So that would complete the the upgrade. Not saying that we might need another one or two here along the way, but that should complete it this year or in this budget. Next one is purse, excuse me, purchase laptop, fire any as training use. It's just to provide a computer down here for personnel to use or take to administer or admin, excuse me. For personnel to use to, and I've kind of worded that wrong. So that carrier I could administer training with it or that people who are doing online training here at the station can come in and take online training classes that I have few of my firefighters that have to come into the station because they don't either don't have one or need to be set up on the on the computer. And I make accommodations for them to use mine, but sometimes that kind of disturbs the day if I'm doing something on the computer. So that's what that is. Clean out the engine room. It's been on there still ongoing. There's a lot of older stuff that can probably just be thrown, but it needs to be gone through and organized. Finish the clipboard and say in painting of the EMS edition. You guys have seen that if you've been on the budget committee of SLEP very long. Need to get an estimate or I just need to make time to do it myself, but that's kind of and then paint the paint, there's some of the, some of the building, either end of it. MMA municipal associations risk management, I guess that's the right word, Andy. We're out, did an inspection identified that we need to paint some of the buildings so it doesn't lose anymore. It's integrity, if you will. Again, I haven't got an estimate on that. I know Andy needs to, I think, try, we're going to try to maybe get someone to get an estimate on all the buildings. Those hopefully we can get done in the next year or so, you had two, then long term one. If possible, would be to replace our old generator building out back with a small storage shed and either we could we taught different things, we could purchase maybe one of those containers or you know, build one or whatever it may be. It's just for wall to wall in the station now with pumps and cones and solvent pads and solvent booms and all that stuff. So replace lighting. This has been on there for a few years too with LED lighting. Some of the, most of the lighting in the buildings, the original, origins of the building in nineteen sixty four. So lighting in the engine room especially is pretty, pretty bad. So hopefully we can replace that at some point in the next few years down the road. The last one on there is the two bathrooms that the that are used by both the public and fire EMS. And this, I don't think there's anything been done to those since nineteen sixty four. If anyone's been in there, you can feel free to take a gander when you walk by if there's some holes in the sheet rock and just need some some TLC at some point.
Any question on any of those items that were setting out to do?
Um, I just wanted to comment, there's a typo in the last column on the top.
Just one?
That's the one I can find, Mark. I've been looking for him, I tell you. But I think it's supposed to be begin, not begine, unless you want to dance or something. That's all I had.
There's a quick overview of what the budget for those, that department we're building looks like, slight decrease. Yet no other offsetting revenue for this. We did create a reserve fund a couple of years ago. The intention of any improvement funds not utilized in that previous year, those could go towards that that building's reserve fund specifically. For example, if we didn't, you know, we had money in it, I think for last year to try and do some of the building work and weren't able to get to it. You know, if we'd be able to still have that in there when we're able to line it up. Any questions on the budget part of it? All right. We'll go through the ambulance one and then take a five minute break or so. Kerry, are you still on? Thank you, Mark.
Yes, yes.
Perfect. Kerry, you want to go over your?
Yeah. So the copy that you have is not my saved copy, but I can forward that one to you after the meeting. But I I'm going to go through what I have on my list. There's only a couple of items that really increased our budget. Our call volume was down about sixteen percent this year, which nationally call volumes across the country were down about twenty percent. So we're right in the same ballpark. And obviously that affects our budget because we're not spending as much per call, not spending as much on total calls. But we're also not going to bring in as much money on billing. We did change billing companies this year, which was on our list of goals from last year. The three items that affect the budget, one is under telephone and communications. We have a went to work scheduling. The schedule we use now is a freebie app that we that we've been using for a few years. And it has no tracking and it has no ability if someone were to take a shift off, it doesn't notify anybody. So it means that we're myself, I'm checking the schedule four or five times a day to make sure the people that say they're on are on. And when the tone goes off, even if I'm not on, I go check to make sure we have a full crew that's responding. And the went to work, if someone were to take a shift off, it actually sends me an email. It would save time with payroll because it tracks how many call shifts people have done. It will just make everybody's life a little bit easier, including the crew figuring out what shifts are open. What we have now is very simplistic and not very adaptable. In fact, a lot of people can't get it to download in real time, so they'll look at the schedule, think nobody's on, put themselves on and three people are already signed up. And there's their phone or computer just hasn't caught up with it. So it's a small amount of money. We're going to trial it for free for the month of June and decide whether it's something we want to use for for the year moving forward. It's about two hundred dollars a year. The other item is a video learn, learn goscopy. When I came on as a medic, we didn't have a lot of paramedic equipment and I found the last couple of times that we've been on a call with our providers, our equipment's old and poor at best to intubate with. And they're doing a group order over the next six months with Atlantic Partners EMS where they're getting things at about seventy five percent discount. So we're looking at hoping, hopefully purchasing that and that's under equipment. It's a seven hundred dollar purchase. There's two other big items and they really won't affect the budget. The ET three program that we had, we've been granted the ability to bill for our no transports. It, the state just approved it yesterday, so we will over the next week incorporate it so that we're using it. But it will allow us to actually send the same bill to insurance companies when we go and we treat patients at home, but we don't actually transport them. It it's only a handful of illnesses or injuries that are in the the ET three program. But it looks like it'll probably increase our revenue about twenty percent of the the no transport calls will definitely fall into it and another sixty percent will probably fall into it. So in total, I'd see about twenty percent no transports with no bill and about eighty percent with a bill, which should increase our revenue. And in order to incorporate that, we were planning on this going into effect last year. So some of it was already built into last year's budget. We would need to be able to, in case there was no provider on scene, have the ability to use telemedicine. So we have a grant out there that were, I was on a Zoom yesterday that they swear to me they'll know by the end of the week whether we'll have iPads or not, and we've built it into this last year's budget for the iPads. But I think that there may be some education coming down the road and we may have to spend a little bit of money for our providers to participate in that education. So that's been included under other in the telephone communication in in training. I'm sorry. The last thing on the list, and it really, at this point, doesn't look like it's going to cost us any money. We had a real trial with whether we were going to be able to keep air transportation as an option. And we went to every hearing, we petitioned, we wrote letters and it was a happy medium that we got. What we're going to have to do is license Pnobskut Island Air is one of our ambulances. It shouldn't cost us any money, but it's going to cost us a lot of time creating standard operating procedures and a a plan for us to use the air, the airplanes. And that should roll out sometime this year before December, I would suspect. It may be next week, it may be September, but we will have to apply and become have one of our vehicles as the air ambulance. Other than that, I didn't see any changes. We kept everything the same. One thing we did notice over this last year with the pandemic is we spent a lot more money on supplies, but with call volume down, we used a lot less other supplies. So it kind of evened out.
Any questions for Kerry on some of those things? On the on the budget side of it, it, you know, projects a small one percent or just over one percent decrease. This one does have some offsetting revenue, as Kerry was explaining through the ambulance fees. Last few years, the number has been kind of hard to predict what what it'll be. I mean, it's hard for a few reasons. The obviously the call volume, you can anticipate what it will be. Kerry's able to, you know, track what we've had in the last few years. So there's a page in your budget book that shows shows that and how many runs we've had, how many were transported, how were they transported? We fund the upfront cost of some of those transportation methods and then hope to receive, you know, get that back or most of that back, at least through the billing process. So with the change in billing companies, hopefully we're also able to see a little more consistency in in what is collected each year. You know, but that does provide a fair amount of offsetting revenue for the department. Does anyone have any further questions for Kerry while she's still on?
How long were they going to let the airplane? When will that have to be renegotiated, I guess, is the question? How many, did they give you a timeline?
So it was, it it's a rule, a maniamus rule. It's part of the legislature and it was approved for a change that they would require anyone using an airplane to license as an air medical. Because we're only using it for emergency situations and we're not life flight, we're not going to have a plane sitting here waiting with pilots and staff. They've made some huge exceptions for us. Only a couple of islands that are going to use this way and they've opted to allow us to license the airplane as a ambulance. So we would be listed as having three ambulances, one of which is a fixed wing airplane. And they would allow it to be any plane that PIA sent as long as it was federally approved on their end as an air med. And they have a list of things we would have to make sure we were doing appropriately when we used it. And that rule, although it's been approved, has not, they have not released it as online or so I they've been saying it's going to go through since last September and I haven't, it hasn't happened yet. So I I don't, I can't answer it. I it could be next week. It could be December.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Anyone have any other questions for Kerry? All right. Why don't we take a, just like a five minute break, come back at at five and we'll continue on. Okay, all right. Moving along. Fay isn't here at the moment. I'm going to push this one aside for right now and just see how we get on the others for today. And we can come back to it if we want, but she wasn't able to be here tonight. So if you want, we can reschedule that one, or if you want to come back to it later, we can do that. For the harbor account, a few things were identifying trying to get done. The harbor improvements, we know there's, you know, creating the reserve a few years ago with the intention of being able to have money now for a grant match to fix the boat launches downtown along in the harbor as well as the, the fish plant parking lot pilings. And that was something that, you know, we acknowledged, they all need work. And some of the filings were replaced two years ago now, or a year ago now, along with the ladders. More need to be done. So that's something that we were looking at having some, the engineers kind of worked for us to get kind of concept design and cost figures for us that we'd be better prepared for a warrant article. There's a few options for the boat launch, the ones that are in there now are precast, locked, you know, kind of locked together, linked together. And so having them look, look for that to see if we do something similar or try something different. And then the ship grant again, trying to apply for that this coming fiscal year. The harbor management plan should be done this spring. We've got to circle back with the engineers that are working on that with us. Well, that should be coming, coming soon. There will be some recommendations, of course, in that. So that'll be something that we'll be working towards to try and push forward on. And then the, for this year, there's a dollar amount in the budget for an additional float at the ferry terminal parking lot. And that's something that's been identified, especially now that the ferry pen's been extended to be able to put at least one more float out there. So for this year's budget included, one more float in that, so obviously a one year cost for now to, to do that, we don't, we want to add a second one, perhaps we'll do that the following year. But at least start with one more this year. And at some point, the old ferry crib work that's still standing adjacent to that float system at some point does need some attention. And there's a few options to consider with that, whether they get removed altogether. There was another suggestion by some of the folks in the C level rise committee that looked at it that, you know, suggested, you know, could we build something around the existing system? So even if it were to kind of collapse, it wouldn't, it still, it wouldn't, you know, go into the ferry pen or wouldn't come towards the float system. So the number there is, you know, came out of a, a study that was done. We were one of, one of 10 communities included in a working waterfront resiliency grant project through the main coastal program. They were looking at 10 working waterfront communities and their access. We identified the ferry, ferry terminal location in our infrastructure as the project scope. So they actually have $750,000 on there to, to replace it. You know, so between 750 and a million, they had never done work on the island before and we know island work always costs more. So somewhere between 750 and a million dollars, what they estimated to replace the, the cribbing or remove it and replace it with something else. So the huge number and something that we do need to start to look towards, you know, identifying what we want to do with that, with that infrastructure that's there. So that's just on the, on the long-term horizon, something to look at for the next three to five years. Any questions on any of that? Anything that we're missing that you'd like to see us do? All right, on the, on the budget side, again, a percentage wise, a big increase, almost, almost doubled the, the number for this year. A large, a large part of that's in the supply line, which is the money for the additional float. You know, we, I am recommending that we, we could look at using that fund balance to pay for that one. And the revenue that comes in for this account is the boat excise tax. You can see in that under the revenue side there, the previous two years and this year's year to date through December. You know, we get about $20,000 or between, between $18,000 and $20,000 usually each year. Last year was down a little bit, you know, with, I think I'm assuming a little bit with COVID. You know, things kind of slowed down in the spring. We were closed a little bit, so you know, some of that might be factored into that. So most, most of the regular operating expenses are, are covered through the, the boat excise tax for this, this line either, for this department, if you will. Any questions on the, on the budget side of it?
Yeah, Andy is Bill. Do you usually put the float in there? Isn't, is, that's not a capital expenditure rather than an expense?
I mean, it's certainly going to last a lot longer. It's not like a typical supply where, you know, it's something you're going to use and, you know, reuse every year. But associating it with the harbor, the way that my understanding of how the budget had been built, the harbor master account kind of is the cost of everything around the, just the general harbor needs. The, in the town, in the capital, in the town properties section of the budget, there is the fish plant. And I'm under the impression that those expenses related to kind of the, more of the fish plant property were related to that one, where this is at the ferryboat terminal. The only other place we have to take it out of really is the harbor reserve. But I assumed it might be best that it be within the harbor master account, if you will.
Yeah, except usually things that are in a, a annual budget are, you know, expensed over, over a year. Maybe they're going to last three, two or three years, but a float should last a lot longer than that, shouldn't it?
But yeah, I certainly hope so, otherwise. Didn't get what we paid for. And it's just a bunch of other way the, but the, the chart of accounts is set up is, I mean, other, other than. I guess I don't know.
Yeah. All right. Thanks.
Sure. Any other questions for the harbor? Anything you'd like to see us do? All right. Animal control, not, not much change, no change on this. No major goals set out, you know, more business as usual. The offsetting revenue for this is about two grand a year, a little over two grand a year, depending on how effective the animal control officer is in getting folks to register, which the last two years, I think he's been very effective. So we're able to see that. There was a couple of years where it was down around 800 bucks. Last I knew there were close to 400 dogs out here. Between the year round and summer community, and I'm sure there's a few that, you know, you don't always have registered, so. More business as usual for this one. Is there anything that, any comments, questions, anything you'd like to see done differently?
Andy, I just had a question on the current fiscal year 21. Are we expecting that number, that 878 collected to come up before we get to the next fiscal year?
Yeah, so the year to date was reflective, reflected everything through December 31st, so it was the first six months of the year. So I know we've gotten more than that. The, the registrations fees are due by the end of January. So a lot of folks will generally wait to late December or January to put those in. So it is, it is higher than that now.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Andy, it's Bill again. Question, do we have a harbor master now?
We have a harbor master and a deputy harbor master.
Oh, great. Okay.
All right. I'll go back to the code and LPI because that's the only other one that I had on the list for today. And we'll bring Fay back in when we go into the, if we want to discuss this any further. So she had outlined some of the things she'd like to see get done. Continuing the digitization of all of our, our records, all the permit history and, and some of the assessing stuff, and most of the assessing is going to be in the, in the computer software. But for all the code and plumbing permits that lives in physical files. And it's been a goal for this year and last, and going into next year to continue trying to scan and have a digital copy of those as well. So that's going to take, you know, some, some of our time to be able to do that. Gather and collect information regarding the shoreline zone and other areas of the island. And that's another one of those things we'd like to see done. I think the last time there was any sort of significant review of buildings in the shoreline zone. It was quite a while ago. You know, periodically it'd be great to make sure that we're, we're capturing, you know, we can't always see everything that's going on on the shoreline. But to make sure we got the most active records, up to date records of the buildings, how they're used, the size of them. So that way, if you can look back at least every five years, hopefully. In some cases, you know, we, we haven't seen some of them for 15 or 20 years. So just something as part of a more regular thing to update for our records. Still have a desire to try and get the, to learn GIS. It's something that's starting to, we're starting to work with, with Matt, should work with Matt a little bit on this spring, hopefully. Matt's working to build out the, an online map viewer, which should launch, I think by the end of summer. It should be a great asset, maintaining that, updating that database is something that we'll learn, we'll try and integrate into the staff. And the code office would be a great one. I'd really want to see if we can put some of that budget of the building permit history in the system. That would be a great way to be able to visualize where projects are and help with the assessor and help for other reasons. So she wants to be able to learn more about that. And then for the long term, again, continuing to kind of upgrade or update the, the database. Will something will continue to learn, learn how best to do that.
Andy, Lucy speaking. I've, I'm just curious about digitizing this information because right now the permits have well information on them. And I would hope that, I mean, that's an important bit of information. I would hope that maybe that could also be in this database wells drilled and even the information about gallons per minute. Because that was identified as an important detail we need to know in the community.
Yeah, so we know the, the current database has some well data. There's quite a few on there. Some of them were verified with, you know, GPS and field, field verification. Some might not have been, since then. You know, folks still do submit well permits to us and as long as they turn back that paper with all that information on it, they can get their $50 deposit back. You know, so that's something that I think is still happening. We still have those files, so just, yeah, we just need to update the database and add, add to what's already in there.
I mean, is that on the list? I don't see it here.
Not specifically on this particular list, but yeah, that's generally one of the things that we'll be looking to.
Oh, good. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on some of those goals or things you'd like to, other things you'd like to make sure we're, we're doing for that, for that department?
Well, that's, you know, I brought up the other night too, and, and I brought up with a few of you, I think it's important that we really update our zoning map. It's, it's not very accurate when it comes to wetlands. I know, we all know now, so that's an important, and that's an important part of, of the, the zoning protection and the regulation. So I just see, like to see that maybe get on the list some. So I just see, like to see that maybe get on the list somewhere.
Yeah, the planning commission's been a little more active recently, and I know I passed along our current zoning to Midcoast Economic Development District. Through our county tax bill, where, where all the communities in Knox County are members of that organization. And so they've got some capacity to be able to help with ordinance stuff. And so so far only asked them to just review what we have to provide some feedback on what the commission might want to consider looking at. Where, where it might be out of date. There's been a lot of land use or shoreline zone changes since the last time we've updated it, which was two thousand nine. So between the maps and, and the language and the ordinance, definitely due for a review and potential amendments. All right, on the, the number side of things, there's again some offsetting revenue for this, for this account. Between the building and plumbing permits, you know, roughly ten thousand, eleven thousand dollars a year, it seems we're able, we're collecting. Last year, you had kind of set a goal to collect fifty percent of the, try to collect fifty percent of the total cost for the department. So with the, at thirty-one thousand dollars, we're just over that proposed for next year. We want to try and hit fifty percent. You can see if, if we don't change the rates, estimating about sixteen thousand. So we'd be right about at fifty percent. And that's, again, only going based on past past permits or, you know, the history of the revenue. Seems, seems has been fairly active the last few months. So that trend, maybe that'll continue and we'll, we'll hit that. But otherwise, if we set out an amount to hit and, and say we set the sixteen-five for revenue, but the permits aren't coming in. Our only two options, if, if you're committing to offset the, the budget from taxation by using that revenue, we'll have to be mindful of tracking that better and be prepared to potentially increase, either, either increase the building permit fees or cut back mid-year during the year on the expenses. And with the majority of them during, in the wage line. You'd have less access and less, less opportunity to get to the code officer. So just be mindful of that. We did raise the rates, the fees, I think, a little bit, two years ago. They hadn't been before that changed for quite a while. So I think, I think, I mean, so far the way it's trended, it looks like it would be fine, but just something to be mindful of. Any questions on the budget and the number side of it? I forgot, there was one more. I skipped over it at the beginning because Mark and Kerry were on. I didn't include it, but we intended to go over law enforcement today. So let me grab that. All right, as far as law enforcement goes, that obviously was a lot, big topic of conversation last year. At the annual town meeting, that was voted down entirely. Had a community meeting, public meeting held in the, in July, late July. And the sheriff, our county commissioner, the state police representative, I think someone from DMR and game warden, I think, all came out to that one. It was a pretty well-attended meeting if you remember, if you were there. But to have this opportunity to talk with the sheriff, talk with the county about, you know, the, this community's desires, what we're, what we were hoping to see, realizing that things needed to be different. And, and so out of that meeting and then the town meeting, special town meeting held in August. The board was, put forth a budget that would support seven nights a week of coverage. So with that, that comes, that this past budget we're in right now, this fiscal year we're in at the moment, that we knew that, that wasn't going to be filled to positions right away. And so we, we had a, a partial increase on, on the budget for this current year to acknowledge at least six months, hoping that there might have been a second deputy hired by January. And that hasn't happened yet. And so some of that additional coverage was included in this year, that increase. And so the budget put forth for FY twenty-two realizes that additional increase to get to a full year with a second deputy. Staff and labor, so just acknowledging the objective is to improve relations between the town and Knox County Sheriff's Office. The budget item was just, you know, staff time to be able to have those conversations. You know, we're early on in the, with the, with the newest deputy, that's the resident deputy out here. And he's starting to join meetings with the select board. That was something that they wanted to see, more regular communication with the board and the community. So we've been a part of at least one meeting. The sheriff has joined the board for a meeting. And we'll continue to try and make sure that that communication stays constant or increases over the next, over the next year. So those were the two big things that I had noted to try and, try and achieve and make sure, highlighted the budget changes. Are there other things that, while we're talking about goals for law enforcement, that any of you have on your mind? Anything you want to see us do, change? Anything like that related to law enforcement?
Well, I may be speaking out of turn here. I was just a little worried about Bill. Are you okay?
Yeah, me too.
I would, I'm sorry, I was just, I didn't know I was on camera there.
Great shot of the top of your head.
Sorry, but I was, I had a little bit of Scotch and a couple crackers and then I put my head down for a minute, but I was listening to everything.
Well, that's fine. And we just didn't want to worry about you passing out or something, so. Okay, back to the meeting.
On the number side of things, so with, with all, with the goal of trying to have seven nights a week of coverage. For a full year, two deputies full-time, and that would increase the budget from this past year by another forty-one thousand dollars or twenty-seven percent. A big, you know, obviously a, a part of that's going to be born in the lodging, you know, for a second, a second residence. And then utilities, of course, you know, the way the contract's written, we, we provide the, a cap, but we provide lodging and utilities up to a certain amount. And then the, the contracted services is, is where they're, they're paid the wages or the, the contract costs. You see in FY nineteen and twenty, those numbers are down a bit. A lot of that, you know, has to do with just the coverage that we've received, which hasn't always been full-time, forty-hour a week coverage. So the numbers built out on paper is, that's what it would cost to provide those forty hour, like it's going to be eighty hours a week, seven nights a week. The, the county contract with the sheriff deputies is that they work four, four ten-hour shifts. So two deputies full-time, eighty hours a week of coverage. We would reduce our overtime. We were paying a lot of overtime for one person to cover five, six, sometimes seven days a week. So in some ways, it's not as big of an increase as we were, as I was thinking it was going to be because of that overtime at time and a half. So one hundred and forty-three thousand is what it's estimated or works out to be for two full-time deputies wages. The way we, the way the county proposed it, they still pay for half of the first full-time deputies wage and, and costs, that's wages, that's print, that's the benefits. All the, all the parts that are born in the union contract they have. So half of the first full-time deputy in the town would pick up a hundred percent of the second full-time deputy. No offsetting revenue on this one. You know, can look to use fund balance to absorb some of the increase. So it's not all on one year.
All right, Andy, it's Bill. Is a thousand dollars a month for each of them? That sounds like a lot of rent to me.
That's what was proposed in the contract and, and agreed on. I think it was between rent and utilities, I think it was seventeen thousand five hundred a year at the cap to go toward each deputy's housing and housing allowance, I guess. And that covers the utilities as well.
Well, there's a big, huge amount in there for utilities, ten grand right now, besides the lodging.
Yeah, between the seventeen thousand five hundred for each deputy.
Oh, okay.
Up to, that'd be thirty, thirty-five thousand dollars for, for two.
Wow. Palatial.
Andy, we don't have to secure the housing before they have two full-time deputies, correct?
No, we don't have to. We don't, we have to get one for June, June and beyond. Right now, we have a place until June. Still need to find something for beyond that. Knowing, we all know how hard it can be to, to find, find the rental. The challenge we run into is we don't, we don't know exactly when they'll find candidate for the second position, if that's still supported. You know, so in some ways, no, we don't have one yet. We don't have to secure it before there's a deputy. On the other hand, you know, it's kind of a roll of the dice. If, if we don't have a house when something becomes available and they, and they hire a deputy and we don't have a house, we'll probably be looking at daytime coverage for that other position.
Can we, can we combine the, can it, if we found one unit that can house two deputies, is that, does that cover? Or do we have to have two separate buildings for each one?
That's a good question. I don't know that we have to or don't have to. I think some of it will depend on who's hired. Move out here with a family, you know, kind of have to have that in mind. If they have overlapping schedules where they're both expecting to live in the, in the same house at the same time, that might become a, a union contract issue with the sheriff's office. But it's something we need to continue to, to look at. I know the sheriff was open to some other ideas. One thing he was floating at one point with us, you might recall, was the possibility of, you know, and it has, depends on the, on the people filling it and the county's and the town's desire to see it. But one thing he was thinking, you know, could we do something that's different, you know, and, and I know they, they were talking about it with the union, you know, would it be possible for one of the deputies to work seven days in a row and have seven days off, you know, similar with the ferry service does. You know, and under that scenario, if something like that did work, I could see where it'd be possible to do something like you're mentioning, Donald. But again, that's, that's, that's the assumption that they wouldn't move, move themselves and their family here and call that their home. That would, if, if someone's going to move in there, move all their stuff here and, and live here, that might, might be a challenge.
Well, if, if a deputy is going to move here and live here with their family, would we be on the hook to pay for their rent in perpetuity? Or would they eventually be looking to buy or like? I would, I mean, obviously it'd be great if we could have a deputy move here, live there, live here with their family. I just don't know at what point the town had to continue paying for their lodging. If they decide to live here, like they shift the pages like everyone else, right?
Well, that's up, that's up to, you know, for the board to hear from the community on, I guess, and for the board to negotiate with the county. The way it's written in the contract right now is they, they would still be entitled to that housing allowance. That's how it's been in the past.
All right, I, I would want to revisit that. I mean, obviously it's not something to have to deal with at the moment because we don't have anyone living here full-time. But I, I would want to revisit that at some point in the future.
I agree a hundred percent.
Any, any feedback on the, the level of coverage? Is that between the select board and the budget committee, is that, you know, what's presented? Is that what you've been, is that resonating with what you've heard or what your desires are to see?
The level of coverage is still the same. That's the feedback we got at that, that meeting. So I, I I think we're going to be hard-pressed to find that second deputy, as, as you know. But if, if we get it and they can fill their portion of the contract, you know, it's, that's what the town wants. So that's what we'll move forward with.
All right, any other feedback for law enforcement?
Sorry, Andy, I have one more question. So fiscal year twenty-one, that was as of December thirty-first, correct?
Correct.
And I doubt we're going to get to that full one fifty by the end of the six months this year, correct? So what happens to the budget and money there? Does that help offset this year or is that just?
That, that, yeah, the money that's unspent from that would go to the undesignated fund balance, which then could be used, yes, towards next year, next year's amount. You know, you're, the only thing you want to be mindful of is not, you're not relying on that as a continual revenue stream. So if you wanted to, you know, I'd recommend if you wanted to offset some of the increase in one year to kind of step it, you can do that. You know, generally what I've proposed is if you have a, a short-term, one-year or two-year kind of, you know, short-term thing you have to pay for, whether it's the addition of a new float or a, a two-year project, maybe you look at fund balance for those one or two years, you know, where this is a every year expense potentially. I wouldn't want, you know, I wouldn't suggest, you know, we get kind of comfortable with using fund balance to, you know, fund that every year. But certainly could look at, because the way it's been underspent the last few years, maybe we could look at, look at that and think of it differently.
Thank you.
Any other questions on this one? All right. With that, the next meeting we have scheduled is for Tuesday. That is also, that happens to be the same day that would be a regular selectmen's meeting. And so I was talking with Eric about it and we're going to shoot for the budget portion of it to go from four to six. And I added the library to that one. So that seems like, how we went through it today, that sounds like that might be a, a possibility to get to the rest of those between four and six. And then the selectmen's meeting would start at six. So we can see how we, how we do on that. And that might include the joint meetings between the budget committee and the select board, and then the budget committee and, and board can kind of get in the weeds, if you will, on, on the budget pages and do a little more work. But we'll, we'll continue with this format if that works and kind of go through the goals and the over higher-level review of what's being proposed.
Andy, did you want to do transfer station today? Was that on your list for today or was that for next week?
That was for next week.
Okay. If you're ready for me to make a motion to adjourn, I move we adjourn. Seconded by Donald Poole. All those in favor? Eric Gasper, any votes yes? Donald Poole?
Yes.
Phil Crossman?
Yes.
Pam Alley?
Yes.
All right, thank you all. Have a good evening.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Bye.
Bye-bye. I'll stay awake.